I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for July 17th, 2024. Can we please have rule call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Bonderheid.
Here.
Councilmember John Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai. Councilmember Kevin Manley.
He's also present.
Okay. Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Moody.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kabrick.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese. Present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a quorum for this meeting.
Would you please, at this time, take a moment for personal reflection? Thank you. And would all that are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes were sent out. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? This is the June 18th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion from John to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Vince seconds.
I have a second from Vince. Any further discussion? Are there none? All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And tonight, first thing on the agenda, we have our department presentations. We have Stan Seifert. You're first, Stan.
Okay. I'm Stan Seifert, Superintendent Manager of Electric Utilities. Give you a little update on our employee situation. Right now, we have 18 workers down there. Eight of them are linemen. Three of them are in the substation department, two in the meter department. We have one mechanic, one maintenance guy, one warehouse and inventory foreman, and then we've got one CAD operator. And what we're looking at is next year, we're going to have two of them that's probably going to retire on us. They've been out, one's been here 35 years and the other one 38, I believe. So they are going to be retiring and we're trying to move things around and fill them positions. Not now, it'd be later on in the year. But we're trying to fill some of the workers out we have now if they'd be interested in it. We're going to try to cross train some people and then we'll, when we go to that part, we'll pick out the best qualified candidate to take them jobs. And then next year, we probably have, try to get three employees. They will be starting off as linemen. Because that will start them at the low end and bring them on up. And we're possibly going to try to split up superintendent and manager job like it was before. Right now, I'm doing both jobs. I took Jerry's. I'm doing mine. And I gotta get comfortable with having one of the new guys step up to be a superintendent. And I've been working on that for the last whole year now, trying to get the feel of the guy would have enough knowledge and everything to take over that position. And one that can deal good with the public because that's a big part of giving superintendent, just the public alone. And calls you come in, the surveying, you have to do staking things off and stuff like that. So I want somebody qualified. You guys don't get all the calls and everything complaining about it. Projects around the city. We're starting, we're finishing up the Country Club Estates job. After two years, the wire finally came in. We got the wire pooled. All the underground is energized and now we just gotta take the overhead lines down. But now, since it's raining, it pushes us behind a little bit, but everybody's got power. That's the main thing. So we'll get that tore down soon that gets solid again. And I guess coming up, y'all know the north, south Main Street. We'll have probably two crews working on that, keeping up with raggle, so we don't get behind on that. Northwood Avenue project, moving the poles. We have quite a few poles we have to move. So that's one of the projects we're working on. And around town, just trying to put underground wherever we can. Because we've had, we're having hardly no trouble with our underground stuff. Everything overhead, we've got squirrels problems and we've got tree problems. And squirrels out at Holy Family area, they like to chew in our wire up. We went to same house twice now in the last two years. Squirrels get in there and they start eating the wire. So we don't know what we're going to do there yet. Try to tame them, maybe. And we have, I think, 14 bad poles around town. We have to start changing out. They might last a couple of months yet, but we have to get on that, get them changed out or something drastic happens. We're still working on AMI metering. We're getting close to being finished. And that's where one of the guys retiring. He's staying until that's all done. He started the project. He said, I want to see it done. So he's staying until that's all done.
Percentage you think you are on that? About what percentage is complete?
We're about 90, around 9%. And we're waiting on 500 more to come in yet. We got 500 of them last week and they are from the original batch and two and a half years ago we ordered. And so now we're waiting on 500 more to catch up with everything. So we'll be done with all that, hopefully. And we are, another project we are going to work on is we are running a new fiber line from, to all our substations and to the water towers. That way, we can actually put cameras and watch what's going on around our substations. That's getting to be a big hot item anymore. People trying to destroy substations to your grid. So we're going to put fiber to all the substations and we included the water department. We're going to put them to the water towers too. A future project, we are going, going to try to work on Meridian Road, tying our two circuits together. Right now, everybody on the end of Celestine Highway by the bowling alley, if something drastic happens mid, mid bay, like Easy Street, everybody north is going to be out of power for, until we get it all back on. So we want to make a loop system from Meridian Road and Wildcat and tie it into our system on South Meridian, right by 164. That way, we can throw an air brake switch, get the people back on to where their problem was. So we can, you know, we want reliability. That's what we like to see. And we try to loop everything as possible as we can. Even our underground, we loop that. So middle of the night, we have transformer, wire go bad, we can feed it two ways and kill that section in between. Worry about it the next day. We don't have to do it that night. So that's what we try to do all that. And like I say, converting overhead to underground all over the city, wherever we can, we're trying it. And another future project is replacing our 69 breakers that are coming into the substation. Right now, we got six of them that are oil field. And it's like a bomb waiting there. Them things been there ever since I started, probably 50 years ago. So what we're trying, we're going to try to do is get rid of them and put gas breakers in. And I think each one of them around $80,000. So we're going to try to replace them if we can, so we don't have so much problems with them. The new substation, you're all aware, we're working on, planning on putting a new substation. Northeast corner of St. Charles and 36th Street. More of a reliability issue. Because north, if our north substation on Mill Street goes down and it's over 85 degrees, we can get power out there, but it's such low voltage that we could run into trouble. And we don't want that. I don't want to be the cause saying I ruined a bunch of stuff because I don't have enough power out there. So we are working on that. Imp is helping us design and engineer one. And actually, we got a few of the parts altered for it. So we're still working on that and hopefully by next November, we should hopefully have it online if everything goes right. So. And our mapping system, we got a locator and we got some new attachments to it. That when our guy goes and locates, it's actually a pinpoint where the underground is located. Right, the old locator we had, it might be three or four feet off. But we spent a little more money and got the thing that it'll be right on within an inch, half inch. And he's going around and mapping it all in the system. And we're going to try to convert it to the mapping system that the city has here with water, wastewater. If they got a project, well, they can bring that map up and look, say, hey, we might have a conflict here. We have to research this before we go any further. So that's what we're working on that. And also down the road, we're starting to really outgrow our facility down there on Eighth and Anderson. We got stuff parked everywhere and it's getting to be, you know, can't get nothing in there anymore. All the trucks, trucks are getting bigger. They're not getting smaller. So we're actually thinking about trying to put together something for maybe the old power plant on 15th Street. You know, with the approval from the council and utility board, maybe we can build a new facility out there. If everything, if everything goes right. We're still working on that. And hopefully, we have more information by budget time. So we can kind of let you know that this is the budget or kind of what we're thinking of and then we'll go from there. It's not overnight project. It's going to take a while. So other than that, that's all I have. Have any questions?
It's just nice to see that the power rarely goes out in Jasper. And when it does, it doesn't go out for long.
Yeah. And with this new metering system, we get alerts every time somebody loses power. The linemen get it. I get it every time. Except for now, we're having a little trouble with our SCADA system, with our email and stuff, but we're going to remedy that. We're going to, we ordered a, the board gave approval to order a modem where that, A, the SCADA goes off, it goes straight to that modem and gets straight text to us. So that's going to play. So we should have that within a month. The only thing bad, when the whole circuit gets out, if there's 200 people on that circuit, we get 200 alerts. So, but we're still working on that. We're going to try to try it in, tie it in with our breakers. So if the breaker trips out, maybe we'll just get one instead of 200. So that, we're still, that's work in progress and we're still working on that.
I've been with one of your associates before and I've seen the process, how he gets an alert and goes, oh my God, we gotta. Then he intercommunicate with the other people that he needs to real quick.
Yeah. We actually know it before they call water plant. And it actually, Joe's been really good at that. He looks at it every morning. And we can tell if somebody tampers with it, the power goes off or it's getting hot. And we have one tomorrow. We got AMB Electric has to change a meter base out because it's getting hot. This time of year, they're all getting a little worried warm. But Joe's got a threshold on there. If it gets so high, then we watch it for three days in a row. If it keeps staying that high, then we notify the customer. You have to get somebody to replace that meter socket. Otherwise, you're going to have trouble sometime down the road. Something will burn out. So it's really, the meters are nice, proactive. We can catch stuff before it happens. So.
I just, I want to comment to Stan. Stan took on the role when Jerry retired and as, like as he said, he assumed both his role and Jerry's role for the year to get a good feel about what that whole organization is about. Done an exceptional job and very responsive to the needs of the entire city, working with other departments, collaboration. You know, it is time for us to consider putting somebody back in place as number two. He needs a vacation. Time off. And we always need to have that person that we can rely on when Stan's not there.
I haven't been off a day in two years now.
I know.
I come in, but I may leave.
Yeah. So, so I know, I just want to recognize that he's done an outstanding job, very committed to the city, as well as all of his employees. All the projects that are underway, they're, they're always there working with us, so.
Yeah, we.
Thank you to all.
Always try to tell them, treat it like it's your own. Make it right. So that's what we try to do. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, I am thoroughly confused because I see Ed here for the wastewater. And originally, I was told the wastewater was going to be on here and then told the water department. Now I'm, now I see it. So I don't, I'm going to make the call that it's the wastewater department is next. Yes, sir. Well, but he wa, he was and then he was.
I know it. That's Kirsten's fault.
I need my calendars updated.
Right, right. You know, comment on Stan there. That, that's a, that's a good point. I was thinking, we were talking today, Nancy, me and Nathan Schmidt, we were talking about, you know, years ago, you had a, the neighbors would call each other when the power was out and then somebody had to call the electric department. It's kind of nice to have him. Stan was showing me that today. Kind of nice to have that notification. Anyway, I've got, I'll talk a little bit about our capital expenditures first. You may have heard about the north side wastewater project. We just received news, our ranking was not high enough to receive funding from the Indiana Finance Authority. We ranked 14th. Counties in the same boat, their ranking was 45th. We just met yesterday with engineers in the county. Right now, we got a lot of moving parts, if you will. We're looking, we are still looking to move forward. You know, we've got a lot of development on the north side and we got some north side capacity. So we're still looking to move forward on doing something out there. We're in the process of replacing our center piers on our secondary clarifiers. We are just now painting them and assembling them at the plant. And it's going to take about two months and, and that, that'll be complete. That was about a million dollar project. We are going to replace our sludge heater in our digester. We just opened bids for that. I was real happy. It was a $460,000 price tag. We had put that in our capital expenditure probably a year and a half ago. We really thought that might be up around the $700,000 range with prices going up. And it was actually lower than what we budgeted a year and a half ago. Debrau, Koopel, Koopel was the little bit out of Evansville. They'll be changing that out. It, it'll take 40 weeks for us to get the sludge heater in. Actually, you know, the material. So that'll be, I might be reporting on that again next July. We removed our underground gas storage tanks. We're now in the monitoring phase. That's, that's going well. IDM's going to reimburse us 50% since the tanks were over 30 years old. We continue lining pipes and manholes every year. We also just opened bid for that. And we're going to be lining our portion of our effluent pipe. Part of that, part of that amount of money will be our effluent line that runs from the plant to the river. The portion that's under the road, Frog Town Road there. We will be replacing roofs on three of our buildings and then all the, all the roofs except two, we have two flat roofs down there, but all the roofs will be replaced after these three. So we won't have to do that again for 25, 30 years. So those are the major projects. Kind of little lines on Stan on personnel. So we had a lab tech this past year since July. We had a lab tech resign. Our nighttime operator resigned and Phil Bonifer retired this past year. Boni was our weekend warrior. He, he's done a tremendous job. We replaced him with Chris Grant. He started about a month ago. We really think he's doing a great job, sharp. And we think he's going to stick around a long time. And then our lab tech was replaced by Ian Grant. He started about four months ago. And we are in the process of replacing our night, night shift operator. And again, I think I've all mentioned that to you before, not to beat a dead horse, but me and Kale sat down and we've got what looks like eight employees retiring in the next five years. We've got 20 employees total. We did get an engineering group in. We kind of, you know, we talked a little bit about automation, I think, from your guys' standpoint. A lot of wastewater plants are automated, believe it or not. We're 24/7. We do like it that way, but it was also built that way. So we have to automate some things that. But we had the engineering group in to look at all that. And believe it or not, we're, they think, you know, if, if you're, if you're 100% is automated, we're at 50%, which is pretty good. We updated all our SCADA system. We have all that capability. We just have to get some valving. We'll have to get some actuators to, and then that hooked up into the SCADA system. And that's kind of moving forward. That's what you'll see a lot on our capital expenditures. It's great that we're able to hire people for these shift and weekend shifts. But you know, it's getting harder and harder. So we'll, we'll continue on that path of trying to get the plant automated.
Edwin, that north project becomes a reality, how will that affect your staffing?
You know, the thing, the goal is to run out there. If we have a plant out north, is to run out there probably two or three hours a day, collect samples. You know, I think we'll, I think two is probably the most we would need. One could probably do it. You know, just one other maintenance person. I feel that's just.
Ed, that plant would be fully automated.
That would be fully automated, tied in our SCADA system. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, really just like a, I mean, I know it's a whole plant, but all the lift stations are all tied in. So we monitor all that stuff. Yeah, that's it. That's all I have. If you got anybody, anybody got any questions or anything?
The big rains about a couple of weeks ago, how did, how did it?
Well, you know, that was on the north side, which was different.
Yeah, I was lucky, I guess. I didn't get a call.
Yeah, but you know, we got a lot of rain everywhere, didn't we?
Yeah.
You just don't know. I mean, like in our system, you know, I think a lot of people think lining stops that water and really lining is just a pipe within a pipe. It's just changing a pipe out and water finds a way in the system. That's the struggle. I, I know you stopped some with lining, but it, it's still a struggle. But it did handle it. We had no, you know.
But I've been doing all this lining, though, it's probably improved a lot.
Oh, definitely, definitely. I mean, like I said, it stopped some, but it's tough to stop it all. But yeah, we did pretty good with the rain, really.
Any other questions for Ed? Appreciate.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
And Vince, I know, I don't think you were here last July, right? Anybody, if you want to come down for a tour or something, it's always open. Just call me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I like showing it around. It's kind of amazing.
Go down on a real hot day.
I won't, I promise I won't take you into headworks.
Okay, we'll continue these department updates as we rotate through some. But tonight, we have DuBois County Tourism Updates. So Whitney, would you like to?
I have some handouts and I do want to apologize. I drank a little too much coffee. I didn't realize until I.
I thought maybe because of shopping slip, it might have been something.
Something else than that coffee. No, just coffee.
Kirsten, a couple extra, you can put them in the mailboxes.
While I appreciate you guys letting me have a chance to speak with you and kind of give you a tourism update, I won't try to be too long. I can be a little windy when, when I'm talking about these initiatives. And if anyone has any questions at any time, just, you know, let me know. But I did want to kind of give you everyone an update on tourism initiatives. Our 2022 report card is what they call it, came in this year. So it's always this type of, in 2024, we'll get 2022, 2025, we get 2023. So this is the latest numbers. 2022 was a huge growth year for us. So our, our, our revenue alone had an increase of 18.3%. A huge increase in, in keepers tax, as well as overall, the tourism spend went up by 16.4, roughly percent for the tourism spend growth. So that equates to, there was $117 million for our tourism spend in DuBois County. So pretty substantial. You can kind of see our trend over the years. Obviously, 2020, you can kind of see where that was the, obviously a rough year for us. But overall, we've been seeing some really nice increases for tourism spend. Back in 2014, we were at 73.2 million. So you can kind of just see in eight years, you know, we had an increase of 59.8% for tourism spend for our county. So really great numbers to see. We, ranking per capita, we're at number 14 out of 92. And tourism spend, accounting ranking of number 25 of 92. So that, we, we've been pretty consistent with those rankings. We've been around those numbers since we've been getting these report cards. But it's nice to know that we're not losing ground and we're having some really nice increases within our county.
Whitney, who did you get that report card from?
It is through Rockport Analytics and it is through Indiana Destination Development Corporation. Previously, we paid to get the report and now they have included it without, without having us pay for anything. So we appreciate that very much so.
Whitney, do you think a big increase in 2022 might have been coming out of COVID and the pent up demand for travel and just fitting out?
Yes. 2021, we also had a really nice increase. 2022, substantial with 18.3%. 2023, we still had an increase. So that was great because with the 18.3% jump, we wondered if, if we keep that trend going. It's still increased, but it was a lower increase. So I don't have, obviously, the report yet, but I know our revenue was at 2.4% growth. So a slower growth, but still after an 18.3% increase for inkeepers tax revenue, it's great to see an increase over top of that. And we are on trend this year to surpass that and have a really nice percent increase again this year. So looking good for tourism. And I do think the excess demand in 2022 was a very real, real thing. Yeah, coming after COVID. I will kind of let you know some of our focus areas for this year. So the eclipse was obviously huge for us. We, as, as every community knows, it was really hard to know where we were going to be at, how many visitors we'd get, what it would mean to our community, logistically, if it was going to be safe. We were really happy that it was a really safe day, easy flow of traffic. We, the, the stress was not needed as much as we were stressed about it. We did have a nice increase in room nights. So we get STR data. That is the data that hoteliers use. So I know hotel rooms alone, we were up a thousand rooms because of eclipse. So it was a really, a really great thing for us to have, you know, not of our doing, astronomical event like that, but we definitely marketed and brought some people to our area through collaborations. What'd you say? Yeah. But yeah, it was, it was a good day all around. Obviously, in 2022, we were at our new visitor centers. We've been there for two years now. We have the signage up. Things are, are looking well. We're getting some more updates to get some enhanced experiences for visitors inside our office, trying to get some more literature creation. Some new things we're working on is a Spanish inclusion guide. So it will be a Spanish version of our visitor's guide. As well as, we would like to get some information on our arts and cultural trails. So the art loop in downtown Jasper, as well as the surrounding art. We will be having a piece on that. And there's some other things in the works as well for literature alongside our annual visitor's guide as well. So we, we continue to try to get some different niche offerings out. We obviously want people to come to the visitor center and talk with us because we can elongate stays and kind of tailor their experiences on their interests. So we do try to do some different initiatives to bring people into our visitor's guide. And we also like talk to hotels to say, hey, we're a resource for you. Let them know that we're over there and, and that way we can, we can help those types of services. For our marketing and branding, it's really important that we have a similar look across board. We want it to be instantly recognizable that we're DuBois County. And, and we have some really great things that we offer. We do do the annual. We do do the annual, uh, change out of our kiosk now, just to make sure everything looks fresh and updated, and it matches our visitor's guide. Uh, we are working on our wayfinding signs, um, that has a scheduled, um, install date of, uh, tw- by the end of this year, um, with a hard deadline by end dot that our contract says it needs to be up no later than April 2025, but we are looking at before December 2024. But just to kind of let you know the hard deadline there. With the wayfinding signs, um, we're kind of excited about the, um, addition to having commissioned art pieces on the backside of them. So we are, uh, we did eliminate some of them. We are doing 19 wayfinding signs. They're in the ones that are in, uh, in the closer communities, the lower speed limits where you can actually see them when you're driving, um, without missing them. And then on the reverse side, um, will be the art, commissioned art pieces. So it'll be a left-hand facing side. Um, with that, uh, three of them are on traffic lights, so it'll be 16 of them that have art, commissioned art pieces. So, that, that initiative is underway as well to go alongside that. Um, we do want to really, uh, stay focused on place making and making it an unusual, great place to, to go and, and visit, um, our communities. Uh, we, uh, we are doing, um, additional printing, digital advertising, co-ops. We, we are continuing our very elaborate marketing, um, initiatives. This year, we did do a, uh, big partnership with Indiana Destination Development Cor- Corporation, also known as Visit Indiana. We did a spring campaign. Um, we were able to come in at $7,500 with, uh, Discover Southern Indiana matching us, $7,500, and with the state, uh, going in 15,000. So total campaign of $30,000 towards, uh, promoting Dubois County with us paying a portion of that cost. So really great co-op. Uh, friend Schlick is also doing a co-op where they partner with, uh, Discover Southern Indiana in the summertime. And I'm proud to report that they also decided to, uh, select some Dubois County, um, initial, uh, some Dubois County, um, attractions, as well as the Strossen Fest as a part of their summer campaign. So, um, I'm, I'm happy to see, um, that, you know, that partnership is working with that as well. We, uh, we did go away from doing the every door direct mailer, um, trying to think of, of different ways to get it in the hands of students. Uh, mainly, we wanted to make sure, um, we were spending dollars wisely. The cost kept going up, and we wanted to know if people were actually opening the mail pieces. Um, so we might come back to that, but maybe a clear version. Um, but right now, for the time being, we are, uh, distributing to area schools. And so, um, we partner with the schools. We put them in classroom sizes. Um, and, um, then each student gets a visitor's guide that they can take home with them. So we're, we're kind of, um, doing it that way, um, to get local residents have visitor's guides in their hands, as well as we do an in-depth distribution system, um, throughout our county, too. We do hire tourist information services to, uh, to distribute 30,000 of our guides. Um, so they go to the welcome areas, they go to, um, they have a trail like gas stations, attractions, different things where they own racks. Um, so we do, um, also hire their services to help with the distribution of those guides. Um, let's see. So we know, we, um, Dubois, Visit Dubois County, we're three staff, um, organization. Um, you know, seven board members, um, one advisory member. And then on top of it, we realized that, um, in order to make the biggest impact, collaborations are important. Um, we are a part of a lot of organizations, um, with one of our staff people, um, involved in several. So, um, we are involved in the 4H Council, Destination Honeyburg, Destinations International, Downtown Merchants, Discover Southern Indiana, Dubois County Chamber, Dubois Strong, Explore Southern Indiana, Heart of Jasper, IDDC slash Visit Indiana. Um, we are doing collaborations with Holiday World in their influencer campaign, so we're getting some holla bloggers stay in our community. Um, and, uh, we, there's a couple of other, um, co-ops we've done with Holiday World. Uh, Indiana Foodways Alliance, Indiana Tourism Association, Indiana State Festivals Association, Jasper Chamber, Patoka Lake Area Year Round, the RWB Music Festival, Rojack, um, and Cirmac. Um, we are also a part of Team Indiana now, Indiana Sports Corp, and, um, that relationship has gone, been going really well, um, with their bid fund. It's, it's allowed us, um, some additional opportunities, um, that, um, will be helpful in the future, too. DC Multi-Sport, um, is, um, a part of our initiatives as well. I know, uh, you know, Phil's on our board as well as Kevin. Um, and we, we host some different events out of there. And, uh, we also kind of keep track, um, down below, you can kind of see the, the past and future projects. These are just highlights and things that have a connection with tourism, um, whether we are steering them or we are more promoting the fact that something happened. Um, so we kind of have a list here. Uh, for the 2023, 2024, um, Senior LPGA Championship was huge for us. Um, I, uh, the, the rain and the weather, uh, was unfortunate, but at the same token, um, it did bring some national attention to Solden's Run. Uh, going to golf shows, it was amazing what saying we hosted the Senior LPGA Championship did to us. Um, it really, it really helped solidify, uh, Solden's Run as a destination golf course, as well as it, I think it did help in improving their, their ranking of number four in the nation. And, uh, we actually had a, a meeting today with the GLVC. I think it's going to open up some more possibility of championships and, uh, tournaments that we wouldn't have had without hosting such an event. So that's still some future, um, possibilities there with hosting that. Downtown Jasper revitalization obviously is amazing. Um, um, love that. Um, Rojack, they had their 20th anniversary. Uh, DC Bombers have been going through a lot of changes with going to the Prospect League, uh, as well as doing some additions with their, um, their whiskey and flyboys and, and the peaches experiences and, um, the VIP areas. So they've been having a lot of great growth. And this year, they're hosting the Big League Baseball Classic, so bringing some major league baseball players to Honeyberg League Stadium, which is giving us some really great national attention. Um, place making and art grants, um, we want to continue talent, or keep, keep, um, supporting projects, being a part of projects that help with the place making appeal, as well as we know that art, um, is something that people really, um, love to experience. So we'll, we'll be, uh, continuing, um, trying to focus our areas there. Uh, Door Districts, um, I've heard all positive things on that. I, 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 um, that's been really great for, um, what, what we've heard in our, um, tourism. Ferdinand is, uh, starting a main street. They are in the process now with the framing Ferdinand. So that's going to be exciting, um, to have another main street in our county. And then obviously, I had the Wellness Center as well as, uh, future prospects. Did anyone have any questions?
I'm curious. You're sole, you're solely funded through the 5% in keepers tax. How much money does that bring in annually?
So it does, um, vary. Um, we are, um, roughly expecting about 60, 640,000 this year. So, um, uh, 640 to 675 is kind of what our goal is. So, yeah, pretty, uh, pretty substantial increases, um, throughout the years. We do also do some grant writing, so some additional dollars do come in for projects, but those just funnel through the, to the projects. So that we are funded, um, our budget is funded through in keepers tax solely.
You know, uh, just to comment, I think the, um, visitor center has been doing a great job in promoting Dubois County, and we talked about, in our long-range plan, diversifying our economy. And tourism is one of those areas that we wanted to grow. So this, I think it's a pretty substantial effort that's being put into it. And look forward to continuing that. I think what we've seen and what you've indicated here is that activity is what draws people here. It's not just having the amenity sitting there. You have to have tournament, you have to have a concert. You have to have something going on with it, you know, and that's what people look for and, and, and draw them into this area, so. So we still got, got a way to go in our planning and everything, but there's, there's quite a bit underway.
I will mention on the backside, it does have our staff listed as well as our board members. Um, so, um, I know everyone knows me, um, our other staff members are, uh, Jessica Lindauer, Heather Wire. Uh, then our board members include Rachel Steckler, our president, Jim McFall, our vice president, Mary Clem, our treasurer, Kurt Bonderhide, our secretary, Shelby Gidley, Chris Tretter, and our newest, uh, board member, Kim Fisher, as well as Hamong Shaw as our advisory member. Um, I, I also, um, would invite you guys to use this little QR codes. This goes to the, uh, Visit Dubois County newsletter. That is where, what we send to like leisure travel, as well as we have some niche marketing that we do with that. Uh, then, um, the Tourism Initiative Newsletter, that's the one that Jessica sends out, and it says the things that we're working on and some successes we've had in different campaigns. And it shows, um, like website traffic, and, um, we've been had, having some really great increases in website traffic. Um, and we've had, um, like last year, we had a 25% increase in engagement. So people are staying longer on our website and visiting more pages. So I invite you guys to do that, too.
Any questions for Whitney?
Uh, Whitney, when I, when I look at this, uh, tourism spend for capita ranking of 14 of 92, that's, to me, seems pretty impressive for a county our size.
Yeah.
Uh, is that a, a new high watermark for us, or have we?
We've been around that range for quite some time. But it is, um, it's something that we're very proud of.
Think we're within striking distance of, in being top 10?
I mean, it'd be, it'd be great. Um, and we've, we've been increasing, um, our, uh, our growth has increased. Um, we're, we're really working on initiatives. I would love to see us in the top 10. And, um, hopefully, one day we'll see that with Rockford Analytics. But no, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of being number four, uh, 14 out of 19, 92.
Should be.
Who's number one?
We don't get that.
Oh.
We only know our, we only know ours.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, thank you, Whitney, for the update. Appreciate it. Okay, next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-12. And this is available for one reading only procedure. It's an ordinance to transfer the appropriations for the remainder of the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. Could I have a motion to consider the ordinance for one reading only?
I'll make the motion.
A motion from Vince.
I'll second that motion.
A second from Nancy. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay. Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
I move that we read the ordinance by title only.
I have a motion from Chad for title only.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Phil. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, would the city attorney please read ordinance 2024-12 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-12, an ordinance to transfer appropriations for the city of Jasper, Indiana for the remainder of the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number 2024-12?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, was that motion from Nancy? And then, uh, did I hear?
It echoed, I think.
I think it was Kevin.
Kevin, did you, did you make a second?
Yes.
Okay, a second from Kevin. Further discussion, would you, oh, you can't.
He's on virtual.
You're on virtual, Kevin, and since this has to do with financial
Budget.
Uh, you wouldn't be able to participate in the vote in this, so I'd have to have a second.
I'll second it in honor of Kevin.
I have a second from Chad. Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Kirsten, you'd like to explain a little bit?
Sure. Um, as you know, we were awarded two Community Crossings Grants, um, this year, Million Paving Project and a Street Rehabilitation Project. Um, these fun, these were funds that the Street Department, um, determined would be used to pay for those projects. Um, they're already in the Street Department's budget, so it's already been appropriated. This is simply transferring them to the Transfer of Fund line, Transfer of Funds line.
Do you want to go through all of them, or?
Uh, that's a good enough explanation to me.
Okay. All right.
So, make sure I understand. So we had appropriated that money already, and then this money came in, and?
So, the Community Crossings are 50/50 match. So we, for example, um, for the Street Rehabilitation Project, um, the award that we received was for $325,000, so we had to come up with another $325,000. Jeff already had, um, these funds in his budget. Um, he had $318,000 earmarked in Motor Vehicle Highway Fund that would be used to pay for this upon award. So it's there, we're just transferring it to a different line.
Okay, that makes more sense. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that vote, just to clarify, that vote would go down as 5-0. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is a resolution. It's resolution number 2024-16. Um, this is a resolution authorizing the funds transfer for the Community Crossing Fund. It's available for one reading only. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
Move to read by title only.
Have a motion from John to read by title only.
I'll second.
A second by Vince. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have the city attorney, please read Resolution 2024-16 by title only?
Resolution number 2024-16, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing a funds transfer, Community Crossing Fund.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt the Resolution 2024-16?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. Further discussion?
It's really just the ordinance that we just passed, putting it into a resolution.
Well, it's actually then taking it from, from the transfer line in Jeff's budget and moving it to the Community Crossings Fund, which is where we have to pay for those projects out of, so.
That was my question today, when I was asking about, uh, resolutions and ordinance. So this only requires a resolution versus an ordinance.
That's correct.
So in, in reality, this is just basically proclaiming that we're doing this. It's, it's already going to be done.
I don't know if you remember last year, um, during the audit, State Board of Accounts, this isn't, this resolution wasn't something that we ever did in the past. We simply approved the transfer and then moved the money over. But State Board of Accounts indicated that we now have to do a resolution, putting the funds there. So we were already doing it, we just didn't have a res- resolution in support of it.
Required as a resolution from us, then.
Honestly, we could have done it via, uh, an ordinance as well, but it, it's just a, it's just a, a transfer, and we've already appropriated it, so.
Makes sense. Thank you for your response.
It makes the next audit go quicker, cleaner.
We have that closing next week. Any other discussion on this? And again, is this something that, um, the remote participants would not be able to?
No, they couldn't.
They, you can vote on this, Kevin and Paul. Okay, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I, I think there were no opposition to this, is that right? Okay, so it's 7-0 vote.
Yeah, that's fine.
This resolution has passed. Next item on the agenda is another resolution, 2024-14. And this is a resolution adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for the provision of services to an annexed area, Timber Ridge Estates 4 subdivision. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion that we read by title only.
I have a motion from Vince to read by title only. I have a motion from Vince to read by title only. Do I have a second? I have a second from Phil. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the city attorney, please read resolution 2024-14 by title only.
Okay. Resolution number 2024-14, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for the provision of services to an annexed area, Timber Ridge Estates 4 subdivision.
Okay, could I have a motion to pass and adopt resolution number 2024-14?
So moved.
Have a motion from John?
I'll second that.
And a second from Nancy. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out that the fiscal plan was provided by our office. We've received input from all the department heads, and we anticipate that there will be no additional costs to the city as a result of the annexation, and there will not be an increase in our levy as a result.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any other discussion? All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, since we're on Timber Ridge, could we go ahead and skip to the Timber Ridge ordinance as well? That would be ordinance number 2024-10. Just take the next two in reverse order.
All right. So next is ordinance number 2024-10. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy to read by title only?
I'll second.
And Vince, seconds. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is the first reading. Do I need to open this up to a public hearing at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point in time, I'd open it up to the public for any comments?
Mayor's saying no comments or hearing no comments, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion from Nancy to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from John. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is thereby closed. I have a motion from Nancy and a second by Vince on the first reading by title only. And I think I did have a vote on this already, did I not? Well, let's do it. All in favor of reading it by, first reading by title only, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? The city attorney, please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent and contiguous territory into the corporate limits of the city of Jasper, Indiana, Timber Ridge Estates 4 subdivision.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
So moved.
I have a motion from John. And a second from Kevin. Any further discussion?
Does have any questions?
I think Vince had a question.
This would be first reading, and we would bring this back again next month?
Right.
Correct.
On the fiscal, actually.
The fiscal plan, I just thought maybe there was a misprint, because it said that 7.2 acres was only worth $5,600.
That's the current assessed value. But it's agricultural, and it's not in the city limits right now.
Not a typo.
No, that is not a typo.
Thank you.
We anticipate that increasing.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good question, though. Clarification. Any other questions? There's no other questions? All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ordinance 2024-10 has passed the first reading. Next, we'll go to ordinance number 2024-8. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only? Again, I emphasize, this is the second reading for this ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we read by title only.
I have a motion from Vince.
I'll second.
And a second from Chad. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance?
Yes, ready? Ordinance number 2024-8, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent and contiguous territory into the corporate limits of the city of Jasper, Indiana, North Ridge subdivision.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin?
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second reading has passed. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only?
A move that we read the ordinance on its third reading by title only.
I have a motion from Chad.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vince. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2024-8 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-8, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent and contiguous territory into the corporate limits of the city of Jasper, Indiana, North Ridge subdivision.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
So moved.
I have a motion from John.
I'll second.
And a second from Nancy. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ordinance number 2024-8 has passed its third and final reading. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-11. Could I have a motion to consider the ordinance for one reading only?
So moved.
Is that John and then Paul? Paul, were you seconding the motion?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion from John, second from Paul. All in favor of reading the ordinance for one reading only, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy to read by title only?
I'll second.
I have a second from Phil. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2024-11 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-11, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, approving and authorizing a loan between the Gas Department and the Water Department within Jasper Municipal Utilities and other matters connected therewith.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number 2024-11?
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
I'll just keep it here.
I have a motion from John and a second from Kevin. This Kevin has a lot, okay. Further discussion on this? This is a, this is a?
There are two projects that are identified in the ordinance. One is the backup water supply project, for which we received a grant from ADA, and these funds are the matching funds for that project. And then the Mill Street Water Main Replacement Project, which is getting ready to start in August. And so the total between those two projects is indicated, I lost the number, 1.3... 1,323,000?
It's 870,534 plus 560, so it's about 1.4 million dollars.
Backup water supply is what we see out on Porzo Road.
That's what's happening right now.
So on the Mill Street also, I guess with the new building going up, or the factory deal with the apartments, will that be able to tie into their work?
With that cramp project?
Yeah.
Construction project?
Yeah. I assume they've kind of taken that into consideration, probably.
I, we talked about utilities, and I don't, none of the utility departments found any issues with that project. I think they're all, it's adequately serviced by the existing infrastructure.
Yeah, okay.
Good question, though, anticipating.
It was 1.430 million.
Any further discussion? All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear, I thought I heard seven. All right. That ordinance has passed on one reading only. Next thing on the agenda is the opioid litigation. Renee, you want to talk about this?
If you recall, last month, we also had this issue on the agenda, just for information only. Kroger has agreed to move to the next step in the settlement process. And so, beginning in May, cities, towns, counties, any of the plaintiffs in the opioid litigation were asked between June and July to consider whether to opt into that settlement. Indiana is a state that is opting in, but within Indiana, all of the defendants need to determine for themselves whether they want to opt in or out in order to determine whether there's a large enough percentage of the communities within the plaintiff group. So our consortium of attorneys is recommending to their clients to opt into the opioid settlement against Kroger. And so tonight, we need to determine whether to go ahead and opt in. It's nearly identical to the other settlements that we've been participating in and from which we've been getting opioid funds.
There is no risk to the city by opting in?
No.
Yeah, why wouldn't you opt in?
I wouldn't. I would not.
Reserve your right to sue individually.
Originally, though, we were the very first one, you remember? We were going with our own claim instead of the state claim, and then we switched to the state, so now we're staying with the state's plan.
Just an agreement.
A motion to authorize the mayor to sign the documents to opt in.
And then? I don't know what the PBM descendants stands for, but basically that's the Kroger settlement.
Yeah, that was, I gave Chris Kirsten the wrong title or information.
So that's not correct.
That is not.
In your, you had Kroger.
Just for your information, PBM stands for Pharmacy Benefit Managers. So right now, they're going through a process where they're trying to determine if that needs to also be a class of defendants.
Okay.
But that was not for tonight's consideration.
I'll move to have the mayor authorize us to opt in and sign any necessary documents.
I have a motion from John and a second from Phil. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I did meet with, Carmen and I met with the Police Department and the Fire Department yesterday for some preliminary budgeting. And both Kenny and Nathan have identified some trainings and some materials that they think that they would like to participate in or purchase, and they'll bring those, that would qualify for the opioid dollars, so, and they'll bring those to you at budget time and let you know what those are.
And we had indicated that would be the best method, whether it be Nathan bringing it, or Logan Jones, or whomever.
Okay, I had a vote for ayes and call any nays. Okay. Two nays. Okay, is there anything else? If not, I'd take an entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from John?
I'll second.
A second from Vince. All in favor, so anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.